Good evening, everybody. I want to welcome you to the monthly Scarborough-Guildwood Town Hall meeting with myself, City Councillor Paul Ainslie, my provincial and federal colleagues, John McKay MP, and Mitzi Hunter MPP. And this evening, we're joined by our special guest, Dr. Shavita Patti. Dr. Shavita Patti is currently an Associate Medical Officer of Health and is Toronto Public Health's lead for COVID-19 mass immunization clinics. Previously worked working as the Medical Officer of Health at the Fraser Health in British Columbia and as a Deputy Medical Officer of Health in Saskatoon Health Region. Dr. Patti holds faculty appointments at the University of British Columbia and the University of Toronto. Dr. Patti received her Doctorate of Medicine from the University of Ottawa and completed her specialty training in public health and preventative medicine at the University of Toronto. So, Dr. Patti, I'd really like to welcome you here this evening.
Thank you so much, Councillor Ainslie, and thank you all for having me today. It's a pleasure to be here.
Excellent. Thank you. So, our usual format tonight, we have asked residents ahead of time for questions and answers, and we also have people texting or emailing in their answers that our staff are going to be feeding us. So, I'll start with John. You're up first, John, for questions this time?
Number one in the batting order. Well, that's good. Dr. Patti, first of all, welcome. Welcome to the centre of the universe, which is Scarborough. You probably don't know that, but it's true. And we have some of the most intelligent people here in the entire country, and one of them is Marcia. And this is something we've been really hearing a lot about. "I've been trying to book appointments for my daughter and myself since you sent the email." Oh, don't blame me. But not, I've not been successful. We have been sending out pop-up clinic emails. "If we expect the city to be open, why is it so difficult to get an appointment?" And especially as I work in high-risk areas as health inspector with the school board." That's pretty serious work. "It is extremely frustrating, as it seems that we have to check every minute daily." So, what is your answer to Marcia?
First of all, Marcia, I really want to apologize to the experience you're having. I do want to acknowledge it is frustrating. And, you know, for everyone out there, you know, I can't fault you. It is a bit confusing, because here in Toronto, we actually have many avenues to get your immunizations. And part of our thinking was that we wanted to have different avenues available to everyone, because different people have different lifestyles, different schedules, and we want to make sure getting your immunizations are as easy as possible. But definitely hearing that scheduling is not an ideal situation right now, and I really definitely want to apologize, and we are trying to make things better. So, I will say this, probably your easiest shot, you know, to get an immunization is actually to go check out our website at toronto.ca/covid19. There you'll find the link to the city clinics, which is a booking link, and it directs you to the provincial system, which is the system that the city clinics are employing right now to book your appointment at one of our clinics. And if you're having struggles with the online system, you can also call the provincial call centre, which operates, I believe, till 8:00 PM every single day. And I'm sure they'd be able to help you out. That said, really, what this really boils down to is that we just don't have enough vaccine supply right now. We're talking about the hottest commodity on this planet in the universe right now is COVID-19 vaccine. And we're really dependent on the supplies. And at our city clinics, for example, we don't, we only schedule appointments according to how much vaccine we know we're going to get. So, you know, I'm sorry you don't have an easy answer for you. Your best bet is to try our website and call the provincial call centre for more assistance in booking an appointment, and hopefully we'll get you in soon.
Janet asks a similar question about trying to book an appointment for a friend. And for several days, I've logged on at midnight, when the new date rolls over. Apparent appointments can only be booked 14 days in advance. But despite that, there are no appointments available at all. So, she's obviously quite familiar with the system. What's the point of saying that the site is open for bookings when the appointments are obviously already booked? Because perhaps it's because of rebooking the 10,000 appointments that were cancelled when the site was taken down. I think there she's referring to the Scarborough sites where the hospital, the Scarborough Health Network had to cancel both the Progress Campus and the Centenary Campus. But if that's the case, why not tell people? So, don't waste your time and energy fruitlessly trying to book an appointment. There's no more virtual waiting room. So, obviously, people have given up trying to book through the Scarborough Health System. Perhaps you could and should be researched prior to the Town Hall meeting. Well, you're on the hot seat here. You're in a hotspot, because 15 of the 17 postal codes in Scarborough are hotspots. So, you're on the hot seat and the hotspot. And you might talk about the interaction between the Scarborough Health Network and the city of Toronto health system, and the interaction with the province, which apparently had 500,000 bookings yesterday. So, maybe you could talk to Janet about what she's asking here.
Sure, sure, Janet. And I just, once again, want to apologize for the frustrating experience you're having. But I'm just, I'm so glad that, you know, you're supporting your friend and, you know, just really helping people get their immunizations. So, I just want everyone to acknowledge that this is actually a historic undertaking right now. This is the largest immunization campaign we've actually ever undertaken in the history of humanity and at this pace. And, you know, not making excuses, but there's going to be bumps in the road here. And in order to take this, have this massive undertaking, we have to have as many hands on deck. And so, what that means is that we're working together as Toronto Public Health, the city of Toronto, working with our numerous healthcare partners. So, whether it's Scarborough Health Network, our other hospital partners, our Ontario Health teams, as well as our pharmacies. And so, everyone is pitching in in this huge effort. And once again, I really want to apologize that the, you know, we heard Scarborough Health Network had to cancel appointments because of vaccine supply. That's really kind of a rate-limiting step right now, unfortunately. And, you know, we hope with time, you know, especially as Moderna retools their plant, and they can actually manufacture more vaccine, this problem will be alleviated. So, you know, once again, I can't speak for the Scarborough Health Network clinics, but speaking to the city of Toronto clinics, we only create appointments if we are 100% sure we have the vaccine. So, it would be in a really rare circumstance we would have to cancel clinics. But what happens then is that we always have, you know, we don't have that many appointments to offer, because it's all based on vaccine supply. Sorry to bring you back to that. So, what I suggest is, once again, go to toronto.ca/covid19, check out our website, and try the online booking system for your friend, or try the provincial call centre, and hopefully we can find you an appointment soon.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you. Mitzi?
Thank you. Thanks, Councillor Ainslie, and good evening, everyone. It's unbelievable, actually, that we're still meeting in this format month over month. It's been pretty much about a year that we've been meeting each month like this. So, Dr. Patti, we are very happy to have you tonight. And I do want to say to everyone that, you know, I'm wearing red tonight. It is the National Day of Awareness for Missing and Murdered Indigenous Women and Girls. And we can't forget those who have been affected by violence and their families. So, just want to remember them tonight. So, Dr. Patti, we have, as you know, a very active constituency here in Scarborough-Guildwood. It is one of the hottest of the hotspots. And so, you know, one of the questions that we're being asked is many of our constituents are essential workers, and they've continued to work throughout the pandemic. So, David is asking, he crosses the border for his job, and, you know, he is an essential worker, one of the many in Scarborough-Guildwood. But when he goes to the clinic and answers the question about being out of the country, he says that he is turned away from the vaccination clinic. So, I guess he is trying to get his vaccine as an essential worker who travels frequently. So, he basically says, "How do I get vaccinated?"
Yeah. So, first of all, you know, David, thank you for your service. Essential workers are really key to keeping our country running. It's why we still have food on our table. So, really, thank you for your service. And I do want to stress that, yeah, when you go to any clinic, they have these screening questions. And of course, you know, if you've been out of the country, you should technically be quarantining. But we know there are exceptions for, and exemptions, I should say, federal exemptions, for individuals who do cross the border, because they are essential workers. And I can only speak for our mass immunization clinics at the city. But we do, we do recognize these groups of individuals. And what I suggest is, if possible, if you can bring a letter from your employer stating that, you know, you are a central worker and you have to cross the border frequently for your job, I have actually informed our team that, you know, provided you don't have any symptoms, you should be permitted to get your vaccine at our clinic. So, that's probably the best solution. So, for anyone out there who is an essential worker, I know, for example, we've had flight attendants come to our clinic. They brought a letter stating that, you know, "I'm a flight attendant, you know, I have to travel because of my job." You know, as long as they don't have symptoms, and they haven't been in contact with a recent COVID case, you are most definitely permitted to come into the clinic and get immunized.
It's really great, Dr. Patti, that Toronto Public Health provides that service to our much-needed essential workers. So, Jack is asking a question here. Jack was one of the first in line to get his AstraZeneca shot when it opened up at a shopper's drug mart. And at the time, they were unable to tell him or give him a date for a second shot. So, he has no clue about when he can have his second shot. So, what do we say to Jack?
So, Jack, congratulations on getting your vaccine. And I'm glad you were so keen, and you got your AstraZeneca. That's amazing. It's a great vaccine. I'll say this, I know there's going to be a lot of you in this kind of this situation, because, once again, it's going back to that, you know, vaccine supply issue that we have. And right now, at least, I haven't heard anything recently on what the sightlines are for AstraZeneca coming to the country, right? We know that there's sort of two major locations in the world that produce AstraZeneca, one in Europe, and then, of course, in India. And we know there's a humanitarian crisis essentially going on in India right now with COVID. And really getting supply from there is, the chances are probably limited. So, firstly, I'll just state, we don't know when we're getting more AstraZeneca. That said, we know there are so many people who are in this situation. And NASSI, the National Advisory Committee on Immunizations, who you've heard, they're reviewing the studies right now to see what we call is vaccine interchangeability. So, right now, we generally don't advise people to get different vaccine products or different types of vaccines. We, you know, we have the mRNA vaccines, which are the Pfizer and the Moderna, and we have the adenovirus vector vaccines, which are the AstraZeneca and the Johnson &amp; Johnson. And right now, we're not, you know, we don't recommend mixing the two. But we recognize that people will be in this position where they got the AstraZeneca. But if we don't get any, we want to make sure that you're still protected. So, I would say, you know, there's still between your first dose and your second dose. And between that, we do expect to hear from our counterparts at NASSI on whether you'll be eligible for another vaccine such as Pfizer or Moderna. So, you know, you'll have to still stay tuned. And what I also suggest is, when it gets closer to the date of your second dose, so the 116 days have passed from your first dose of AstraZeneca, is to contact the shopper's drug mart and see if they have any more details on second doses as well.
Thanks, Mitzi. Dr. Patti, I have Jane, who says she has an 18-year-old daughter and has an upcoming appointment booked to get her vaccination. Would it be possible for my daughter to get her shot with me when she comes with me?
So, as much as I want to make this as easy for everyone, unfortunately, our clinic appointments get booked up really quickly. And we do need to honor everyone who has booked an appointment. So, right now, we can't take walk-ins into our clinics. Maybe into the future, when we get more vaccine supply, that'll be possible. But, you know, my apologies. But if, you know, Jane, if your daughter is 18 and lives in, obviously, in the hotspot zone with you, you can try to book into our mass immunization clinic. So, right now, we are taking bookings for anyone who's 18 and over, living in a hotspot in Toronto. You can book into our mass immunization clinics.
Okay. Thanks, Dr. Patti. The next question is from Chris and Nisa, who say, "I have received the first dose of the vaccine, but I know there are others that believe that once they've received their first dose, they're immune to COVID-19. Can you clarify on the rules after you receive your first dose?"
All right, Chris and Nisa, I love this question. Thank you for raising this, because for me, you know, the vaccines are amazing, but we know they're not 100% protective, right? And we still have to wait for much more of the population to still get immunized, right? You've heard the recent news reports, approximately 40% of Torontonians have received their first dose, right? And for most of these vaccines, you need to receive two doses to be really protected, right? Especially with the Pfizer and Moderna, to hit that 90% to 95%, you need to have your two doses. And so, that said, not, you know, let me just stress this first and apologize that this gets a little, you know, nerdy. And, you know, I am a doctor and I'm a scientist, so I love immunology. But, you know, first and foremost, I want to convey that, you know, as soon as you get your shot, it doesn't mean you have this invisibility cloak to COVID. It doesn't mean you're magically, instantaneously protected. It actually takes several weeks to develop antibodies to protect yourself. So, to keep that in mind, okay? So, with that in mind, we still have to adhere to all of those public health measures, okay? So, that means maintaining your distance, not going to crowded spaces and gatherings, wearing your mask at all times, including outdoors if you can't safely distance with someone, washing your hands, and of course, if you are symptomatic, to stay at home. And what I do want to stress too is, yes, you can become sick after you've received your vaccine, because you just may not have had enough time to develop antibodies. So, if you do develop symptoms after you've been immunized, you still need to follow all the same rules again, right? Stay at home, isolate, and get yourself tested as soon as possible, because you could still have COVID. So, I'm really thankful for this question. I really want to stress, you know, I know everyone is tired and fatigued, and, you know, their hands are all dry from washing their hands so much with the alcohol, this hand sanitizer. And we all want to have parties and barbecues. But, you know, we just need to keep at it a little bit longer. And then, the more, the better we stick to these public health measures, you know, the sooner this will end. So, you know, keep at it. So, just stating that, get your vaccine, but we got to still keep at the public health measures.
And, Dr. Patti, if you had somebody, like, say, two individuals working in an office, they were the only ones in an office, they both had their shots, but they should still both wear their masks, maintain their social distancing, and not interact with others? That'd be similar?
Yes, same, same thing. And I would also advise, if you are, if you are someone who does have to physically go into work, you should always screen yourself every day, every morning before, or before your shift, before you go to work. Make sure you don't have any kind of symptoms. If you have any kind of symptoms, please stay at home and get yourself tested as soon as possible.
Perfect. Excellent. John, your turn.
Yeah. Further to Dr. Patti's point, I do have a friend who did get a shot, and two or three days later, got COVID. And fortunately, it came through. I think, further to your point, I take it, the further along you are between your shot and your symptoms, the better off you are. The vaccine starts to, if you will, reduce the symptoms. But it doesn't actually prevent the disease until you build it up after two or three years. Anyway, let's get to Cheryl here, who is some irritated, may I say. "So, the Scarborough Vaccine Clinics, Centenary and Centennial, Centenary and Centennial are already fully booked for May 1 through 14. They didn't bother rebooking people who had appointments cancelled in April. I booked an appointment at Scarborough Town Centre through the provincial site for May 14th, but I'm not sure that it won't, it won't be cancelled. The pop-up clinics are nice, but not everyone can get up at 5:00 AM for a pop-up appointment. Being a pharmacy appointment seems to require the ability to just drop everything. I work from home, but I do work all day. At every level and every political stripe, politicians should be deeply ashamed." So, other than being deeply ashamed, what would you say to Cheryl?
Cheryl, I, once again, I'm really sorry about your frustrating experience, and I'm sorry your appointment was cancelled. At the, I can't speak for Scarborough Health Network clinics, which are the Centenary and Centennial clinics. I can only speak for the city clinics, which are under my sort of responsibility. Once again, to reiterate, the city of Toronto... Yeah, I mean, so, I'm glad you were able to get an appointment. So, I don't anticipate that your appointment will be cancelled. We do have the vaccine for that appointment. And, you know, once again, you know, I hope into the future, things will get better as vaccine supply improves.
Yeah. She's not convinced that her appointment, that she has, won't be cancelled, but I guess we'll see. Just on that...
Yeah.
...into the country. I think that's the correct number. And I think the agreement among the provinces is that it's per capita. So, that would mean for the province of Ontario, roughly 40% of that 2 million, which is in the order of 800,000 available in the province. So, of that 800,000, how much would, how many doses would Toronto get?
All right. For the record, math is not my forte at this hour of the day.
You're a scientist and a doctor. You should see us. We went to law school. We know that math is not our strength. Yeah.
So, I'll state this. The provinces, when the doses are allocated from the federal government to the provincial governments, the province is responsible for the allocation. And they do this, they look at the data, they reassess things on a really, on a regular basis. And so, usually, it's about 20% of the provincial allocation will come to the overall city of Toronto. And, as you've probably heard through the media, that additional doses were given to municipalities who had really hotspot areas. So, that included the city of Toronto, possibly York region, and also received additional doses from their sort of per capita. And when those doses then come in the province, we then have to divvy it up amongst all of the service providers that we have within the city of Toronto. So, I'm just trying to say this in the spirit of transparency. And this is done looking at, you know, where is the greatest need? So, looking at the, especially the hottest of the hotspot neighborhoods, and how much each service provider can actually administer based on their human resource capacity. And, you know, looking at sort of vaccine cold spots as well, right? Where is there really low coverage? And then also factoring in data such as where are the people coming from who are ending up in hospital or who are unfortunately passing away, right? So, there is a lot of science and math that happens more so in the daytime hours, although a lot at night as well. But, you know, that's how we divvy up the doses. So, I can speak for the city of Toronto. This week is what we call a feast week. We actually got a lot of doses. We have 80,000 doses on hand. And I can say our clinics are booked at 100% right now.
So, if you've got 80,000 for the Toronto Health Network, you would think if the city or the province received 800,000, the city should receive somewhere between 150,000 and 200,000. So...
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
So, how is it you only got 80?
Oh, so, this is just to the city of Toronto Mass Immunization Clinics.
Okay. Not including the hospitals.
Not including the hospital.
And then, we also have this really amazing, what we call a mobile sprint strategy. So, those are also our hospital and our Ontario Health Team partners, who are setting up the pop-up clinics and other small clinics in the really hotspot neighborhoods, making sure that people in those communities have direct access to the vaccine.
Yeah. So, and I don't want to divert from the constituents' questions here, but it is germane. So, this week, between the city of Toronto and the various health networks and the various others that are associated, what is being distributed? Is it 200,000 doses? Is it 250?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but it is, let me just think right now. It's between 250,000 to 300,000 doses.
So, that's a serious number. That's a serious number, and people should take some comfort out of that. Okay. Thank you for that. So, Massey, no, hang on. And that's...
I'm sorry. You've got another one?
Well, that was my question, not Massey's question. So, "I'm 45 years old, and I'm looking for a Pfizer or Moderna. Are these available in Scarborough?" Answer is yes.
Yeah, you know it. Yes. Yeah. We have, we have those vaccines. I'll say Pfizer is more plentiful, because that's our more stable supply. Moderna comes in fits and bursts, because they're still retooling their plant in Europe. But, yeah, and both are great.
You have no opinion which one she should take?
No, no. First one. You know, you know.
First come, first served.
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. Good. Thank you. Mitzi?
So, Dr. Patti, I'm wondering for Marc about, I know... ...why a second dose? But she wants to know if the supply will be enough in July for a second dose of her AstraZeneca shot.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Just to double down on that.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, once again, just to reiterate, the federal government is responsible for vaccine, what we call vaccine procurement and acquiring the vaccine and bringing it to Canada. So, unfortunately, I don't have any more details or sightlines on that. But, you know, I just want to put, if people, I can put people's minds at ease, you know, if you got AstraZeneca and the supply is questionable, NASSI is looking into seeing, you know, whether we can give you Pfizer or Moderna for your second dose.
And the federal government is also responsible for the weather. So, all of the clouds and rain this week is...
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah. You believe Doug Ford, that's probably true. Yeah.
Dr. Patti, I do have another question here. And it's just, once an individual starts receiving, once we start giving second doses to everyone, which is, my understanding, is going to perhaps even be accelerated with the supply, the voluminous supply that we now have of vaccines, how do people who have not yet received their vaccine get prioritized? And I would see it as, you know, in the minds of Toronto Public Health, so for our local community in Scarborough?
Most definitely. So, there's a few angles here. I want to sort of answer this question. So, the overall prioritization framework of who got to go first in line for a vaccine was developed by our provincial counterparts at the Vaccine Task Force. And a lot of science and ethics and things like that went into who was prioritized. That said, we know there are people who are going to be due for their second doses while there's still a large segment of the population who have not received their first dose. And we are looking into this strategy right now. So, there's active work ongoing onto what we call the second dose strategy, because we want to make sure no one is left behind. And ideally, the reason we went to an extended interval between dose one and dose two is because we wanted to get as many people immunized as possible. So, there is active work going on, and it is also contingent on supply. So, once again, going back to the math, we're going to have to do some really hard math to see how many people are left who are unimmunized, and how do we, you know, make slots for them in our... to see how many people are left who are unimmunized and how do we, um, you know, make slots for them in our clinics and, and bring them in, um, while, while we still respect the, um, the second dose interval for the remaining people. Um, the other thing I want to say is, um, we know it's not easy, I want to acknowledge that first and foremost, and I've done a lot of research, um, in, in my past around this on other vaccines. You know, it's not easy for everyone to just come to a clinic, you know, some people are working three jobs. Some people, um, have, you know, um, people to take care of at home and they can't just leave their home, uh, to, to get vaccinated. And so this is why we're working with all of our health sector partners, as well as different community agencies, um, to see how we can make, um, vaccine as accessible as possible. And, um, as we start getting more of the fridge-stable, uh, vaccines, so, um, you know, as if we get more AstraZeneca, more Johnson and Johnson, which is fridge-stable, and even Moderna to a certain extent, which is fridge-stable, um, we can have more access points for people to access vaccine as well. So we want to make sure that everyone has, um, has as many opportunities as possible to get immunized. We don't want anyone left behind, and so, um, that is definitely at the forefront of a public health's mind, because in order for us to get out this pandemic, we need to have at least, you know, for me, I would say probably eighty to eighty-five percent of our, our community, you know, fully vaccinated, right? So, so, um, you know, the work is going on behind the scenes around that piece.
I just have a, a tack on, because this is late breaking today, Health Canada approved Pfizer, the mRNA vaccine for, um, those adolescents, twelve to sixteen years old. And, um, I know that the province is sort of still deliberating on how that rollout is gonna happen, whether through schools or, but, you know, the expectation is that it will happen before school, um, resumes in September. And, and so that's also adding to the mix of prioritization, because now there's eligibility from, you know, a scientific perspective for one of the vaccines to be administered to, um, those adolescents.
Yeah, most definitely, and, um, I, I know at the, at the province, uh, the Ministry of Health is convening what they call a pediatric table. And so they're actually, uh, discussing, um, that very topic right now and, and, and I should say, they've been actually discussing that for a few weeks now, so even prior to this Health Canada, um, approval for, for twelve and, and above for, for Pfizer. So, uh, we'll continue to monitor the situation and, and I, I just want to state too, um, it's really important in the pediatric population, this pandemic has actually derailed our other routine immunization programs that we would offer in schools, right? Our HPV vaccines, our hepatitis Bs, um, so. Children who are unimmunized for all the other diseases as well. And so, um, there has to be some thought also to that, is how do we, um, not only get these children immunized for COVID- nineteen, but also catch them up on their other vaccines?
Good point. Yeah. Uh, and that leads into my next question, Dr., uh, Kathy asks, I can't get a vaccine. I'm sixty-seven years old with limited mobility, nobody to help. Rumors on mobile may be coming to my building. Um, I'm also on the registration list for Shoppers as well as Rexall, and I can't decide what to do.
So, um, you know, Kathy, really sorry, um, to hear about your mobility issues and, and your health conditions, but I'm really glad you're, you're trying really hard to get immunized. Um, I think, yes, that's great that you put yourself on a list, uh, for the pharmacies. And I just want to share, there is some hope, even though the AstraZeneca may not be coming. Um, uh, there has been a Pfizer pilot at, uh, a few pharmacies and it's actually gone extremely well and they've used up their doses, so, um, you know, continue to touch base with your pharmacy, um, to see if, uh, they'll eventually get, say Pfizer or Moderna. Um, the other thing too is maybe you want to contact your primary, um, uh, practitioner, uh, so whether your family doctor or your family nurse practitioner, and ask them if they have any insight on, um, either family practices who might still have some AstraZeneca, uh, doses on hand, or, um, if they can connect you with, uh, sort of, um, and I'm still learning the system here, so I apologize, um, whether it's through the LIN or through the Ontario Health Teams, um, whether they can, um, you know, identify you as sort of, you know, someone, um, who's homebound and could qualify for that program, uh, to have someone deliver an immunization at your door and also, or has insight into a mobile clinic. So I, I will say this, there are several buildings, um, um, who have been identified, you know, they either have, um, you know, many elderly people living there or people with medical conditions. Um, they are on a list and, um, I know the Ontario Health Teams are slowly getting to them based on, on vaccine supply. So, um, so that rumor could be very well true, I just don't have timelines on, on when a mobile clinic might be, um, coming to your building.
And, and when she talks about rumors of a mobile clinic, my understanding is the briefings that we've been getting from City Hall is mobile clinics are very targeted to a building or a clump of buildings. They wouldn't advertise to an entire postal code per se.
No, no, it would be very targeted and they'd probably work with, um, either a service provider who already serves that building or, or that building manager.
Okay, um, and my next question is, uh, and that's around buildings as well. What is the strategy to vaccinate residents in Toronto community housing buildings? As all the buildings in Scarborough are considered in hotspot postal codes?
So my, so my understanding is that these buildings have been identified and, um, um, basically, um, all of these buildings are sort of, uh, put on a list by Ontario Health and, and a risk stratification is done based on, on what we know about those buildings and who lives in those buildings, right? If, if it's, um, you know, a higher proportion of, of seniors who live in that building or, or special populations who may, um, have other medical conditions. So that's stratified and basically Ontario Health has this list and, and they're slowly, um, going through, um, those, um, buildings, uh, building by building based on vaccine supply and, and their own capacity to immunize. So, um, it's just a matter of time, but I should say this, if you do live in a hotspot and you do have the ability to either go to a pop-up clinic or to register for a mass immunization clinic, um, don't hesitate to wait, because we don't know how, we don't know how long it'll take to get an actual mobile clinic there.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Mr. McKay, you're up.
I think just on that point, um, wasn't there a pop-up clinic at Woburn, not Woburn, at, um, Scarborough Village, uh, today, I think it was today. Um, I understood it would, but, um, it's, it's very popular. So, um, I've probably, uh, we got, um, Chris here who's worried about missing his second appointment. But what happens to him if, uh, by accident or otherwise, he misses his second appointment?
So if you book through the provincial booking system, um, you will actually get reminders, because we know a hundred and, and twelve or a hundred and fifteen days is still a ways off, you know, um. And, uh, so you will get a few reminders about your appointment, so we do try to, um, avoid missed appointments. But you know what, life happens and sometimes you will miss your appointment and that's okay. Um, so if that happens, call the provincial call center and we'll get you rebooked for a second dose.
Okay.
Hi, Dharma. So, um, actually I have a question from.
Mitzi.
That's okay, I got your back, uh, Paul. Um, so one of our very active, um, uh, residents, uh, is Nessa. And, and I know, like, I have answered.
We all know Nessa, we all know Nessa.
And, and Nessa works, uh, so collaboratively, um, you know, with the people in her, in her community. And, and she's wondering if all seniors, um, will have their second dose by June. Like, well, so remember when we had started with sort of those over eighty and then we went to seventy-five and over? So will, will the elderly have, be fully vaccinated by end of June in your experience?
I have a keen interest in this question.
Some personal investment, um. So I, I'll say actually, um, not necessarily, um, of course, if there is, uh, more vaccine supply and there's a change in provincial guidance, we'll definitely move people up. Um, but, uh, you know, we, we still have many people who are on that hundred sixteen, uh, day interval. And because, uh, for instance, our mass clinic started, uh, first day was March seventeenth. So, um, actually, the first day of second doses, uh, won't start until about, uh, July seventh, that week there. So, um, so, um, to answer Nessa's questions, no, not all seniors will have their second dose, uh, by June. But I, I should say this, though, if, um, um, people who are residing in long-term care facilities and retirement homes, uh, we are respecting the product, what we call the product monograph dose interval, so the, the twenty-one or the twenty-eight days ba, based on the product. So, because those individuals are at higher risk of, of, uh, you know, um, succumbing to severe illness and, and hospitalization and, and unfortunately death, they, they will receive their second dose within that timeframe.
Good. Karen, from, I think, Karen, um, she's a designated caregiver and a volunteer in a senior's residence. She received Pfizer in March and, uh, this was administered through Michael Garen, Michael Garen Hospital. Um, she wants to know how she will be notified or.
So in fact, yeah. Which does connect. Instructions on how to have the second dose.
Okay.
Okay, and Dr. Patti, uh, all of Scarborough's postal codes are considered hotspots. Why pop-ups only happened in three of the hotspot postal codes to date?
All right, that's, that's a great question, this is something we actually get asked a lot. Um, and, um, um, I'll, I'll say this, um, we actually have, uh, two phenomenal leaders, uh, um, one is from Michael Garen Hospital and one is from, um, University Health Network, um, who are, who are leading what we call our mobile sprint strategy. And, um, as you may have heard, that, uh, city of Toronto actually has, uh, fifty-three postal codes, um, that have been identified as, as hotspots. But of those fifty-three, uh, we identified, or I should say, these, these two individuals who are leading the mobile sprint strategy identified thirteen really, really hotspots. Um, hotspots in terms of high number of COVID cases and people, um, ending up in hospital and unfortunately dying as well. Um, and what I'd like to call a cold spot for vaccine. And so, um, there was a lot of data and math and science that went into, um, where the initial pop-up clinic should go, because there was an actual urgent, urgent need, uh, for vaccine in these, uh, in these so-called cold spots, because they, they literally had not even single, barely single-digit immunization coverage rates. And so the population was quite at risk. And so, um, the, I think they started about two weeks ago, so they've had some huge success and they've actually increased the coverage rates dramatically in those, um, in those hotspot neighborhoods. They're actually now adding, uh, more postal code neighborhoods, and I believe there were four more postal codes, um, added to this strategy, so there should be more pop-up clinics coming to, to, to the Scarborough locations, um, in, in, they, both this week and, and as well as next week.
Okay, and, uh, related question, what is the current per-day capacity at the city's immunization clinics? And are there any plans to increase it or open more clinics as we're expected to get a steady supply of vaccines starting this week?
Yes, so actually, our, our clinics and I would say our health sector partner clinics, actually I shouldn't speak for them, I'll speak for the city of Toronto clinics, we actually have a fair bit of capacity. We could actually do upwards of ninety thousand doses per week. And as I mentioned earlier, um, this week we're doing upwards of eighty thousand. So what rate-limiting step right now or factor is, is really that vaccine supply. And of course, we could even expand further by increasing our hours. Um, so if we ever get into that, you know, flood of vaccine situation, we are ready to, to inject, uh, you know, arms. That's, that's not the issue, so it's really the supply that's hampering us right now. Um, but, you know, hopefully with time, it'll get better. Um, so I hope that answered that question.
So if, um, if, uh, if you added in the health networks, uh, would you double the ninety thousand?
Um. So MP McKay, you're, you're asking me math again at this hour. Let me just do some math in my head. Um. I would have to, I would have to confirm what the overall city capacity is, but it's definitely, uh, well over, um, a hundred thousand, you know, total health sector, um, capacity. And of course, it's changing as we figure out more efficient ways to structure our clinics. So, so there's definitely a lot of what we call put that could happen if we had the vaccine. And I'll tell you this, um, so this is the, um, largest supply we've ever received so far to date this week. And, and we have no problem burning through those doses. I think we're burning anywhere from thirty to forty thousand doses a day, and it, it's not even, it's not causing, we're not even breaking a sweat, basically. So we can definitely handle the volume, we just need the supply.
Sorry, Paul, uh, when you say you're burning through thirty or forty a day, that's just the city of Toronto.
That's just the city of Toronto.
And you've got a capacity to ninety, so really, if you work three, three days, you'd, you'd, you'd be out of your supply.
Uh, well, ninety thousand is just for the city of Toronto, um, mass immunization clinics, but, uh, overall city of Toronto approach with our health sector partners, yeah, ninety thousand we could burn through easily in three days, um, e, even faster depending, um, how, how stacked our clinics were, so.
Thank you. Okay, we're at seven forty-five, Dr. Patti, we're gonna play rapid fire with you now. We always get lots of questions, uh, Mitzi?
So another question from Nessa, and she wants to know what the restrictions are. And I think it's a really good reminder, Dr. Patti, once someone has their first vaccine, what are those restrictions?
So it's still the same restrictions, you know, that you had to go through five minutes before you got your vaccine, right? So I'll, I'll reiterate it again, because this is really important, you know. It takes several weeks for your body to actually develop antibodies to protect you from, from COVID. And even that, even though you're protected, a lot of the public still isn't protected, because we still need to get a lot of needles into arms. So what that means, you still have to keep your distance, wear your mask, wash your hands, not, not go into gatherings, you know, um, stick to your household members, and if, of course, if you're sick or symptomatic, which could happen if you've been immunized, you need to stay at home, isolate and get yourself tested as soon as possible.
Great, and, um, oh, John, go ahead, John.
Well, I thought these were all Mitzi's questions, but, um, since the two of them are provincial and Mitzi's the queen of the provincial, uh, knowledge, so I'm gonna defer to Mitzi.
I'll, I'll keep going, and they are provincial questions, so Dr. Patti, I can jump in as well. Um, so Sierra is asking, I need to take time off work to get vaccinated, can I use the provincial paid sick days to get vaccinated or tested?
Um, so actually, I can't speak to the, the latest, uh, paid sick day, so I might hand that back over to you.
Okay.
Well done.
So, um, yes, so the three provincial paid sick days, uh, which will be administered through the employer, who will then claim back up to two hundred dollars a day from WSIB. Um, so those paid sick days are flexible, they can be used to go and get a COVID test, uh, to get your vaccination. And, uh, if you need to stay at home, um, if you're sick or symptomatic, as you said earlier, you know, you check yourself and you feel that you have symptoms, it's better to be cautious and to, um, to stay home or get tested to be sure. And, uh, that's exactly what those paid sick days are for. Um, of course, we know that the federal government also has a program of up to twenty days, uh, that you would need to apply for, uh, if you want to participate in that program.
Right, Dr. Patti, I have a, a question from Ruth. She says that her son is fifty-nine years old, has, uh, Down Syndrome, had a stroke, has dementia with related behavior and seizures. We have no assistance, I'm eighty-one years old and my partner is seventy-seven. Until now, we've been managing on our own. My son needs a vaccine, he cannot be taken to a site. How can I register my son so he gets a vaccine at home?
So once again, um, you know, this is, you know, one of, it's, it's a hard situation to be in, and I want to acknowledge that. And, and so I think the best approach in this situation would be to connect with your primary care provider, your family physician or your nurse practitioner, um, um, or, uh, who provides your son's care and, and see if they, um, could connect with Ontario Health Team or with the, um, the local health integrated network, integration network to see if, um, they can, can someone, if someone can come to the home and, and provide any immunization. Um, alternatively, if you can, um, uh, connect with the pharmacy and if, if you can bring your son to, um, a pharmacy, um, you know, that's another, um, alternative as well.
Okay. John, the federal government like to weigh in?
Federal government doesn't. Federal government doesn't need to weigh in. The, the major issue for the federal government is securing supply. And that's been, you know, the, the four-month drama story is just trying to get supply. And you're seeing uh, expectations, government, government had legitimate expectations of more supply by now. And um, and uh, but didn't anticipate that uh, say India, for instance, is a humanitarian disaster. Um, and that's affected supply, didn't anticipate. And how could it participate that uh, one of the um, manufacturing facilities in um, in Europe went down? Um, so uh, uh, you know, we are, it is what it is. We are where we are. Um, and we have a reasonable expectation that um, uh, that over the next few weeks and months, uh, we will be, I was gonna say flooded, but I think, uh, I think the number is forty million by the end of June. And that's more than the population of Canada. And so um, uh, hopefully all of these conversations about um, well, I got a second dose or I don't have a second dose, whether I want this one or that one and et cetera, et cetera, will be, will be behind us. And if, if what you're saying is correct, uh, uh, this evening, which I think it is, um, hopefully next week you'll be busier than you are this week.
Dr. Patty, do you think um, people that have had, received their AstraZeneca, if they, we don't have a supply for second doses, would it go, like for example Pfizer, would they go back to kind of like their first shot didn't happen? And they would have to do two doses of Pfizer to reach their ninety percent? Or is that still something that's being looked at or?
Yeah, there's, it's being looked at. And I know there's studies actually actively being, um, that are being undertaken in Europe, um, exploring that. And actually, um, um, you know, not to, to go too far in the future, um, some people may have already heard that Pfizer is actually recommending a third dose for anyone who even got two doses of Pfizer. So it's, it's um, really too early to tell. I think as, as time goes on and more studies and more research is done, uh, we'll have a better understanding. But who knows, this could be, um, you know, COVID could be with us for a really long time and we might have to get our shot like we do every year with the flu. So um, you know, um, as we learn more about uh, about this disease and about this, this virus and, and, and the vaccines and how they work, um, we'll get more details on that.
Okay. Perfect. Excellent.
So I have, uh, I actually have a provincial question. So I'm gonna answer this one, uh, Dr. Patty, so you can take a-
Okay, thank you.
Cut your breath. Get a glass of water.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll take a sip of tea.
Order. And there is one really important provincial benefit that I want to remind families and for people to spread the word. And that's the Ontario COVID-19 child benefit applications. They are now open until um, the deadline is May seventeenth. And this is currently offering a benefit of four hundred dollars uh, for each child of school age. Uh, grade twelve and uh, and five hundred dollars if that child has a special need. Um, so if uh, if you've already registered for this uh, in previous rounds, you don't have to do anything. You'll just automatically receive this benefit. But if you have not, for some reason registered before, it's important to do so before May seventeenth so that you and your family can have those really needed and important benefits. So that's my response to John.
Okay.
Thanks, Mitzi.
You want, uh, are we doing wrap-up now or are we not doing? Yes. I was just gonna say, we're gonna let our guest of honor have the closing remarks first. Dr. Patty?
Thank you so much, Councillor Ainsley, and, and thank you, MP Hunter and, and MP McKay. Thank you so much for being here and to all the constituents um, in, in Scarborough. It's uh, um, I actually quite enjoy doing this and connecting with people. Um, it's uh, it actually gives me um, sort of a, a sense of, of, um, you know, what people are concerned about. And then if I can do anything to ease your mind, you know, that's what I'm, I'm here for as well. And um, I just want to, you know, remind people, and actually firstly, I just want to say, you know, thank you so much for showing interest in immunizations and, and vaccines and, and continue to um, you know, encourage all your friends and your family members to get vaccinated because this will help us end the pandemic sooner. And also along those lines, just keep on sticking to those public health measures. I know the weather's getting nice outside, barbecue season, but we still need you to stick to your households right now and, and do all the right things with maintaining your distance, wearing your masks, staying home if you're sick and washing your hands a ton. So with that, uh, thank you so much and I wish you all a good evening.
Thanks, Dr. Patty. Uh, Mitzi?
Thank you. And thank you so much. This was a really fun hour and I learned a lot from you. Um, and uh, don't listen to John about the math. I, you know, I have an MBA. Keep it all straight in terms of what's coming or going with vaccine supply. It's not very easy to do, but I, I want to say, um, you know, I believe that Toronto Public Health is doing a really terrific job on the immunization rollout, um, even with the bumps in the road and, and some of the things that have happened. And uh, the work that you and your team and Dr. Devilla do each and every day, every day, um, on behalf of uh, keeping us all safe is, is really important. And um, I just want to say thank you and thank you for taking the time to view this this evening as well. Um, and to, to all of the residents that are watching and that, that do watch, that interact with our offices, um, you know, know that uh, that your input is really important and the questions that you ask. If we don't know the answer, we often go and seek that answer. I, I know I do from um, the, the various um, uh, people responsible within the provincial government and we try to get you um, the answers to your questions. Uh, we are still in this. We're not through it yet. We're still in the third wave actually. So um, what's most important is that you and your family stay safe and follow all of the guidelines so that we will get through this together as soon as possible. So thanks for being here tonight.
Thanks, Mitzi. John?
Well, I wanted to thank Dr. Patty for uh, coming here tonight. Um, she clearly has no talent as a politician. Uh, we would, uh, she answered all of the questions in a straightforward fashion, full of facts and uh, useful information. Um, so um, we appreciate your uh, your willingness to uh, come and share that information with us. And speaking of a politician giving misinformation, apparently I understated the number of doses that uh, we are to receive. We're supposed to receive two million nationally from Pfizer from today on and a million dozens of Moderna uh, from May tenth to sixteenth. So um, I'm rather hoping that uh, as that supply ramps up, you'll be run right after your feet, Dr. Patty. Um, and um, in the meanwhile, uh, but even during and even after, um, to uh, wash their hands, keep their distance, um, observe the protocols and get jabbed.
Thanks, John. Dr. Patty, thank you so much for being with us this evening. I know you've had a year of very long days and uh, I hope you can enjoy the rest of your evening and catch your breath and get some downtime. It's been a very informative evening. Uh, really appreciate all your expertise and advice. Uh, John and Mitzi, as always, it's been a pleasure having another of our monthly town hall meetings. And uh, to all the residents of Scarborough-Guilwood for listening. And I will say the same thing as I do every month, please follow all of the uh, social distancing rules. Wash your hands, get jabbed, and uh, we will all get through this together. Thank you so much for everybody and I hope everybody and your families stay safe and well. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Patty.
Bye.